Good morning. Welcome to the Budget Reconciliation Public Hearing on July 28th, opening up at 9:05. My apologies for those that have been waiting around for us for five minutes. With that, because our attendance is hybrid as well, and we have one of our members that is actually attending virtually, could I ask, as I open the public hearing, for a roll call, please?
Oberman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Thank you very much. I am going to, I ask Ms. Wise to give us some opening remarks regarding our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, good morning. Today, as you mentioned, is our annual reconciliation meeting. It is a public hearing, and you will take public comment shortly. We do have a few people who are signed up, they are all virtual. Today's meeting follows last week's presentation of the county administrators' recommended budget for fiscal year 2023. Following public comment, Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget Director, will give a brief overview of the budget. After Kevin's presentation, the Board will discuss the budget, unidentified budget flags for changes to the budget. Kevin did just email to all of you, and we have hard copies for you all, the latest version as of this morning before you. Following decisions on those flag items, the Board will take action on the truth in millage rates, TRIM. The motion is included on the last page of today's meeting package and needs to be read into the record prior to taking a vote. Setting the TRIM millage is a statutory requirement and will be used by the property appraiser when sending out the TRIM notices to property owners in August. These TRIM millages are preliminary millages, as the Board will finalize the millages during the September budget public hearings. Today's TRIM millages will set the maximum millage that may be adopted in September. And that's all I have for now, and I would recommend that you take public comment at this time.
Excellent, thank you very much for that. As we mentioned, this is a public hearing, and there has been an opportunity for individuals to sign up to speak regarding the budget. I have three individuals that have signed up to speak, all of them are attending virtually, and the first one that signed up was Danny McIntyre. Is Mr. McIntyre available?
Yes, yes ma'am.
You may proceed.
Good morning, my name is Danny McIntyre, and I'm a board member. Good morning, my name is Danny McIntyre, and I'm a board member for the Future Career Academy. On behalf of our entire organization, including our firm, Yvonne Frye, I'm here to thank the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners for their ongoing support of the Future Career Academy. Thank you to Commissioner Oberman and Commissioner Smith for the flag dollars you requested today on our behalf. It means so much to everyone who is part of the Future Career Academy. And I respectfully ask that the Board support these requests, not taking in advance for your support. Please know how much these funds will make a positive difference in the lives of the Hillsborough County young adults. Future Career Academy will be part of all 31 Hillsborough County high schools this coming year, a tripling of our current footprint. So servicing all of 31 Hillsborough County high schools would not be possible without the generous support of Hillsborough County, and I sincerely thank you for all of your help. We look forward to hosting you at upcoming events this school year. That ends my comments.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The second person that signed up to speak is Mary Haysek. Is Ms. Haysek available?
Mary, can you hear us? Mary, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Mary, if you can hear us, you are unmuted. Madam Chair, she doesn't seem to be responding right now.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll go on to the next speaker, and if you could communicate with her directly, or give her a call to see if there's some way that she can have our wonderful technology work well, that would be terrific. The third speaker, and we'll come back to her if you can connect with her. The third speaker that signed up to speak is Shelby Bender.
Shelby, can you hear us?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shelby Bender, and I'm the president of the East Hillsborough Historical Society, which is located here in Plant City. This morning, we're requesting your support for funding for the historic 1914 Plant City High School, which needs stabilization of the roof and physical building structure due to damage from water intrusion and the natural elements over the years. The rehabilitation and restoration in 1914 will use construction methods that will meet the Secretary of Interior standards for treatment of historic properties and the City of Plant City's Historic District Design Guidelines. The 1914 has served this community for many years as an educational facility, of which it operated for 60 years in that position, and has been a community center for the past 48 years under a partnership between the society and the city. Our facility houses a history museum, an art gallery, artist's workspace. We have a wonderful and very outstanding research and genealogy library. We have rental venues and an auditorium that is a place for music events, weddings, et cetera. The building has had the distinction of being listed on the National Register since 1984, and it's also included in our local historic district. We serve a diverse audience of people, both in age and ethnicity, through topic, content, and style of presentation. We have research patrons that come here from across the world. We have received small grants from various organizations, including the Arts Council, the Florida Humanities Council, the Florida Association of Museums, the Institute of Museums and Library Sciences, and the American Association of Museums for our small programs. But for funding for the physical structure of the building, we do reach out to Hillsborough County. I appreciate the support that the EOCC and Hillsborough County has given through historic preservation for the many years. I myself have been involved in historic preservation in the county, serving on various committees, including the Historic Advisory Council and the Preservation Challenge Board, and I thank you for the outstanding work that Hillsborough County does in this area. We appreciate your funding support today. Thank you. That includes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Communications, have we been able to help Ms. Haysek participate?
I'm going to unmute her right now. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, that's wonderful. You're welcome, Ms. Haysek, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to thank Commissioner White and his staff, and all of the Commissioners in Hillsborough County for recognizing the needs, including the concentrations of extreme poverty in East Hillsborough County. And it came from a recent needs assessment that the county termed "vulnerable population footprint." This food bank started in 1991, and it's grown. We had to, we started serving 7,000 box meals a year, starting in 1991, and now every year we have over 150,000 requests. The needs go beyond food, that's why we have strength-building other classes that we provide to the community. A diaper bank was added last year, emergency supplies for pets, and this month we launched a new program for our senior clients, which we believe has been extremely hard hit with inflation. The need to increase so much in East Hillsborough County that we took on Brandon last year as one of our nine service areas: Plant City, Dover, Fanata Sassa, Saffner, Historic Bee's ville, Valrico, Lysia, and part of Riverview. We even changed our model to accommodate people with transportation issues by delivering to low-income and senior communities in addition to our on-site services. There's no public transportation in this area, and the at-risk residents rely on us to help connect them with resources. Our intake project has been expanded to go deeper on assessing needs to link these resources. That brings us to today. We've been in the same office strip center for seven, of 7,000 square feet that's cobblestone together, and even renting two refrigerated and freezer semi-truck-sized pods out back. The county helped us a few years ago with a feasibility study to assess the need for a new building to meet our growth. That study showed high need for a more efficient building that would accommodate fresh produce and goods, a lot of it coming from our local farmers. The proposed new building with more than 11,000 square feet is built in a warehouse style. It includes more client meeting space and added parking. We're the only food bank in East Hillsborough County offering these varied services. And I just want to thank everyone again, thank you for your support ongoing with this specific capital new building request. We could not do the work without the support that we've had from you. And I'm finished.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Haysek, appreciate your comments. With that, I do not have anyone else that's signed up to speak this morning, so I'll close the period of public comment and recognize Kevin Brickie, our Budget Director, regarding the presentation of budget materials.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Director of Management and Budget. Today, I will share a presentation with you. It is a condensed version of the presentation that we shared with you during last week's presentation of the recommended budget. The recommended FY 2023 budget is about $8.6 billion, which is approximately a $1.1 billion increase over the FY '22 adopted budget. The largest share of that increase is in the capital budget, and within that, the largest increase is due to new bond issuances for water waste, water, solid waste, and ELAP. There are also some increases in American Rescue Plan-funded projects compared to the previous adopted budget. Within that $8.6 billion budget, here in these yellow lines, we see the operating portions of the budget and where some of the notable expenditures are. The sheriff's office is the largest portion, about $540 million, or 16.7%. Enterprise funds, that's our water, waste, water, solid waste, about 14%. Fire rescue, about 7.4%. So here, looking across the entire budget, all funds, public safety accounts for about 24% of your budget. Looking at the general funds, these are the funds that the Board has the most discretion over. This is the countywide general fund, this is the fund that funds services that are offered across the county, within the unincorporated area, and within the municipalities. The sheriff, again, is the largest portion, this is the sheriff's jail functions and court-related functions, about 39%. And then other constitutionals and some other outside agencies related to courts and such, about 16%. So those constitutionals and other agencies account for about 55% of the operating portion of the countywide general fund. The unincorporated area general fund, that's the fund that funds services to unincorporated area residents, similar to the services that a city would provide its own residents: fire service, law enforcement service, some transportation, and other services. Here, fire rescue and the sheriff account for about 72% of the expenditures, so public safety accounts for about 72% of the expenditures in unincorporated area general fund. We looked at our increases in revenue and increases in expenditures. We did have good revenue growth, as we talked about last week, but we also have cost pressures due to higher inflation, rising wages, and those are reflected in the changes in uses in both the countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund. One area that is particularly priority this year is public safety. Another area is dealing with the fact that retaining and recruiting employees is a challenging thing for all employers, and so we've accommodated those increases to shore up our staff. The amount available for flagging in the countywide general fund at the bottom, $11.8 billion. And in the unincorporated fund, we have similar items. We also have good revenue growth, but also the same sorts of cost pressures. The total amount available at the bottom, $3.2 million. One new thing that we talked about last week was available CIT funds, Community Investment Tax Funds. We haven't had that availability in recent years due to the fact that the revenue stream was bonded in order to bring projects forward in past years. But in these final years of the Community Investment Tax for this authorization, we did expect to have some pay-as-you-go dollars, dollars that could be used to fund projects without bonding. We estimate there's about $55 million this year. We have a number of uses that were in the recommended budget, including the emergency and fire warehouse, some parks and conservation maintenance, maintenance at the jail and in the residential pods, Sun City North Fire Station, and some planning and design dollars for the African-American Cultural Center. And that left about $3.3 million that would be available for programming this year or in future years. Again, public safety is a priority. We did have in the recommended budget a new fire station and the related staffing, an upgrading of two rescue squads to rescue units for higher levels of service, increased funding for the sheriff, also related to, partially to increased personnel costs, and the purchase of the land for the emergency and fire warehouse. We have additions for transportation and parks, we have increased staffing in some parks locations and renovations, some county road race striping and refurbishment program, and pedestrian safety and maintenance retrofits. Technology and facilities continues to be an important area as we look to maintain our current assets in good condition, and also fund the operation of newer assets as they come online, as well as keeping pace with technology changes and demands. We also continue to invest in people and partners. I previously mentioned the efforts that we're doing to invest in our own employees with compensation adjustments, a paid time off program, an enhanced tuition reimbursement program, and as was highlighted in yesterday's workshop, diversity, equity, and inclusion Today, of course, is our Budget Reconciliation Public Hearing, where the Board looks at flag items, and as Bonnie mentioned, our statutory requirement to do the truth in millage or the TRIM process, setting millages preliminarily for consideration at the final public hearings, which will be September 15th, where the Board will adopt the tentative millages in budget, and September 22nd, where the Board will adopt final millages in the final budget. We've gathered flag items, there were some updates through this morning, and I'll discuss those. The Board, after my presentation, can discuss the budget and the flags, take action as desired. We mentioned the countywide funds of $11.8 million, unincorporated 3.2. Also, there were the CIT funds of $3.3 million. Bonnie mentioned the TRIM motion, the truth in millage motion, that the Board needs to consider today. This is that motion as it stands currently, and would need to be read into the record. The flag list. We did send you a flag list yesterday evening, there have been some changes, I'll highlight them. The flag list is on two pages. On this page, the changes, one was to Veterans Memorial Park entrance improvements. We just added to the description that those improvements were a portion of all desired improvements. It is not a funding of all improvements that may be desired at Veterans Memorial Park. This would just be for the park entrance improvements. Then below that, county line road, Grand Hampton, yesterday was at a million, today it's at 1.25 million. Cross Creek Park improvements were added for a million dollars. And there were two items, and I'll show that at page two at the bottom, there were two items that were removed from the flag list for consideration for today, that would be King Forest Recreation Center Splash Pad and Progress Village Park improvements. Those were removed from the list for consideration today, but would be, the direction is for staff to identify potential funding sources prior to the final budget public hearing on September 22nd, and look at that, those possibilities at that time. With that, I have concluded my presentation. Are there questions, comments?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Brickie, for that explanation, and to review the list that each of the Commissioners have provided to the Board for consideration. In looking at the list, I do see that there's, you know, some excellent projects here, some of them would have, we would have thought that they would have been in the budgets already. Many of them are part of our department processes, so it's good to see where everyone's focusing their energy. Commissioner Myers, since Mr. Brickie brought up your consideration for the King Forest and Progress Village, would you like to elaborate the process that you would like to see before we get to the next hearing, and how we would go about addressing that request, which you've pulled from the main list?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Yes, I did, as you can see, I have a whole list of projects that I had the opportunity to visit in my district. And being at Progress Village for the past three weeks, the past three weekends, I should say, and talking with the residents there, expressing their needs, well, in looking at the budget last night, and talking with my aides on yesterday, I thought of a familiar song by The Temptations back in the day, Ain't Too Proud to Beg. And so, I'm not begging, but I'm pleading and asking, and agreeing with Kevin Brickley, to ask the county administrator to revisit this and see can we find the additional funds somewhere in the county's budget to make these two projects happen, for Splash Pad at King Forest, and to do some renovation at the Progress Village. When I look at Progress Village, and back in the day in 1988, when I joined the county, that park and recreation facility still looks the same today. And when we think of meeting the ADA requirements and all, these are the things that we should be doing to make sure anyone that physically challenged can come into one of our parks or one of our recreation, and can get their wheelchairs into one of our restrooms without having to go somewhere else. So, looking at all of this, I'm going to ask this Board, would you join me in asking the county administrator to find some funding somewhere that we can make these projects, whether we have to phase them in, or what have you, during next year's budget? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that's what's so interesting about our budget. You know, there's different ways that we find resources that are embedded in each of the departments, but then there's lots of different funding sources. So until we get to this process where we can identify what's already in the budget, what's already in the department request, and then what we don't see, it isn't always obvious, you know, is this project already in the budget? So for the public's understanding, is these are items that we, that may actually be somewhere in some part of the process of the budget, but until we get here, oftentimes it's difficult to discern what is and what isn't. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I appreciate the remarks of Commissioner Myers, and maybe after the flag list, you know, I guess, I don't know if that was a motion, but in support of your request, but what I'd like to just suggest at this time, and I've gone through a lot of these flag lists, basically for each Commissioner, it comes out to, and I've asked Administrator, 2.6 million, correct? So what I'd like to suggest at this time is I'd like to make a motion that we approve all flag lists for 2.6 million or under, or an equal allocation for any Commissioners whose flag list exceeds that, and that then they could have a, make a, you know, subsequent flag list to be put on consent next Wednesday, that comes within that amount, so that we can just approve this this morning, pretty much as is.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. I'm going to, Commissioner White, did you want to speak to the motion, or just wanted to make some comments regarding the flag list before I move forward?
I actually want to speak to the motion, and then once we dispose of the motion, then I want to go back and speak to Commissioner Myers' comments, but to the motion, I'm going to need to make a motion to amend and ask that we remove my mobile pediatric dental services item for a separate discussion and vote, because that's going to be administered by Suncoast Community Health Centers, so I'm going to have an abstention issue. So I'd be delighted if someone would offer me a second to pull that for a second, for a separate vote. Thank you.
All right, so we have an amendment to the motion, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. And then there's Commissioner Cohen.
You know, I'm not going to speak to the motion, I think at the end, I'd like to speak to the final list, once we're, we've disposed of it.
Okay. I'll speak to the motion, largely because that doesn't work for me at all. I recognize that equal treatment is always a good thing, but also, this is an opportunity for us to actually invest in our communities that may be very much in crisis next year. Part of the reason why we have significantly higher numbers than we anticipated is largely due to property values. Property values have created also a great deal of stress in our communities when it comes to housing. And so, while I agree that it's a good idea to have things somewhat fairly distributed, I'd like to offer a substitute motion, as it relates to the list. Now, I'm not quite sure what to do with White's abstention, because my numbers aren't going to add up well. But in the presentation for the flag list, to approve all of the items in the list, we're over the monies that are available by $3,165,604. And part of that's because in, on my list, I've asked for $7 million to go towards the creation of additional housing units, preferably affordable housing units, but additional housing units, so we can exorbitate additional resources for people that are having difficulty finding places to live. And not necessarily funding the Hope Trust, but to help facilitate creating additional inventory as quickly as possible to possibly address the issue of supply and demand. We've had a huge population increase of people moving here on a regular basis, which is putting a great deal of pressure on home values. We have a supply chain issue that's causing a delay in some of our housing units, but it's not to say that they're not being built, but we need to make sure it's being done well. And this is an opportunity to do so. So I would, I would offer, as an solution, that the $7 million request I have in the flag list be reduced to the difference, in other words... flag list be reduced to the difference, in other words, 3,834,396. So that it be continued to use, I used to continue to have an effort towards addressing what is our number one crisis in Hillsborough County, which is the access to housing. And unable to get a lot of these projects that will help us address the fact that we will not have ERAP dollars throughout 2023. We've had 51 million or $53 million in rental assistance and other housing assistance dollars over the last two years distributed out to help our communities. Those monies will end in next year. We will have a lot of individuals that suddenly won't have assistance in finding ways to stay in their home and stabilize their community and their families that will create a social crisis if we don't help add inventory to this list, which is why I added that number. So I was interested in having that conversation, but if we were to approve Commissioner Kemp's or the substitute, the amended motion, that number wouldn't necessarily work for the amount that I've requested on my flag list.
And there's just a point of order because you made a motion to pass the gavel.
Oh, I haven't quite finished the motion yet. Okay, so I will pass the gavel and make a motion that we approve the flag list separate from the removal of the one item. Can we do that?
Madam Chair, if this all works out in the end, I don't think the dollars are going to change. I hope my item passes and I'm just simply abstaining from it. So I don't think it impacts the dollars.
Right, so I don't think that needs to impact the dollars. Okay. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that we approve the list as presented with my $7 million request on my list reduced by the deficit that we are showing and the total amount, net by the board, which is reduce the 7 million I have to 3,834,396, which is the subtraction of the, the overage that were indicated on the flag list as it stands. And that's my motion.
We've got a motion on the floor from, well, a motion by Commissioner Overman. Do I hear a second? Asking for a second. Motion fails for lack of a second. Pass the gavel back to Chair Overman.
Thank you. So we'll go back to the amended motion and hearing, I see Commissioner Kemp, you're still in the queue. Okay, Commissioner White, you're done too?
That's to be recognized after this vote.
Afterwards, okay, excellent, thank you. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
So we're on the...
Amended motion?
With, with Commissioner White, right.
Without his either, right.
Just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Overman?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Overman voted no.
All right, thank you. So I'll address Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if you'll bear with me, I'm going to need the floor for three separate things. The first thing is going to be to take up this mobile pediatric dental services item. I'll remind the board that I do work part-time as a pharmacist for Suncoast Community Health Centers. I'm not in senior management over there, I'm not a decision maker. Money going to their dental department does not benefit me in any way, shape, or form. Nevertheless, in speaking with the county attorney's office in the abundance of caution, they've advised me to abstain from this. And I'll just say that Suncoast has an outstanding pediatric mobile dentistry unit. Studies have shown that when at needs kids are receiving proper dental care, that they do better developmentally, they do better in school, there are just so many benefits to making sure that children are getting proper dental care. And this is a mobile unit that takes dentists and other dental professionals out to these kids to care for their teeth. So if the board agrees, you know, I'd be grateful if there were a motion and a second to approve that item, and of course, when it comes to a vote, I will abstain.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen.
And just, I deeply...
Go ahead.
I just deeply appreciate the work that they do. I think it is extraordinarily important.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I assume those were your comments that you had in the queue for. Thank you. So please do a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Abstain.
Motion carried six to zero. Commissioner White abstained.
Excellent.
And Madam Chair, if I may, for one more and then one more after that. If I understood the motion on the floor correctly, then that allows each commissioner to take their total to 2.6 million dollars, the motion that passed?
The way I had conceived of it, I have far under that, actually. But it's just that if, if whatever flag list a commissioner had, if it was under 2.6, it automatically just goes. Anyone else needs to just, you know, submit an altered flag list within that budget period for consent item on next Wednesday.
Can I make a motion to add something now that would be pretty straightforward, pretty easy? Okay, so if we're, if we're allowed up to 2.6 million, that would leave an additional 215,000 on my flag list. What I'd like to do is just take one of Commissioner Cohen's items, the title of it, Veterans Memorial Park Entrance Improvements, Portion or All Desired Improvements. I would like to just create a category on my list with the exact same title for the exact same use and put 215, an additional 215,000 towards that. And I think that'll get them much closer to being able to carry out that project.
I'll second that. Thank you.
You're doing a happy dance over there. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Any further discussion to the motion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
And I appreciate this, and I'm, I'm going to support it. But I'm also recognizing that our flag list, available funds is kind of fluid, it's a little estimated, and the, in fact, the amounts we're putting on things is sort of based on estimates as well. For example, my flagged item for a specific segment of the South Coast Greenway Trail is actually probably going to cost closer to 2.5 million dollars. But I've, was, as I was figuring things out, I was, kept it at 2.1 with the understanding that as long as we get that much over there, we will be able to work along within the budget to, to get that, that done as time goes on and as the budget process goes on. So I don't, you know, and because each of us have different amounts, I really appreciate, I'll say right now, Commissioner Myers, working so hard with so many great projects to try to, you know, keep working till the end of the process to get within each of our share. And, and I appreciate Commissioner, the other commissioners, Commissioner Kemp has stayed well within the total one-seventh of what's left so that we could all work with kind of these fluid amounts and accommodate each other's desires. I'm happy to support this, I'm just kind of signaling, I, I think that all of us will be accommodated in the course of time with these projects. I also, as I've said before, feel that our county administration has done an excellent job. The process has really just kept evolving and improving into one that is very transparent and, and very much responsive, not only to us seven commissioners, but to our communities. You know, hearing our communities' needs and, and looking at them through new lenses and new priorities. And so I feel confident that, you know, our flagging process is this last-minute fine tuning within the shares of funds that each of us have. I appreciate what you're doing, I'm definitely going to support it. What I'm saying is, I don't think we need to get all into the weeds, each of us, with the bits and pieces that are left after this. So, thank you, and I've said my piece.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just want to say, in echoing Commissioner Smith's sentiment, I think, I think there's an old saying, happiness is he or she who rejoices in their portion. And I'm really grateful that we had an opportunity to, you know, put forward some things that we care deeply about. I appreciate, you know, Commissioner White supporting this Veterans Park improvement that I know is going to be so appreciated. I was just going to suggest, in the spirit of what Commissioner Smith said, that as you're putting together these final lists, work with each commissioner to, to get it to where it needs to be, and if she, if she needs a little more for the, to make sure that the trail is, is fully funded, you know, I'm going to be supportive of Commissioner Myers initiatives and whatever they are. I don't feel at this point I have anything to add, so, you know, I would just like to see everybody try to get what they can for, for the things that they care about, which I think collectively turns into a very good product, because we all have different areas of interest and they all target different areas of the county that we want to call attention to.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And I agree that that is an excellent goal. For me, it leaves me a million dollars to figure out what to do with, because my list was largely weighted towards affordable housing as opposed to some very important projects. For example, we heard earlier from public comment regarding the impact that the Future Career Academy has on our young people and helping them have a clear vision for success in their lives. So my list will more than likely take some significant changes between now and we come back, but I, I will commit to the process of submitting that and then recognize the value of what Commissioner Myers is trying to accomplish with that project, because that's obviously a well-deserved and well-important issue. So seeing that, we have, we have a motion to approve the flag list as it stands now with an anticipation that it'll come back with some changes to stay within?
No.
No? The motion is for, is towards your item, right, okay. So we have a motion to, to approve the miracle outreach? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the mobile pediatric dental service item separately? Right. Oh, the veterans, I'm sorry, my apologies. I was busy doing math over here, so I apologize. With that, do we, we have a motion in a second? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much, because that one's close to my heart as well.
And Madam Chair, I needed the floor just for my third thing. And that is just to say, Commissioner Myers, yes, I stand with you on your request for your couple of additional items related to parks. I would suggest to county staff that some of this work could be eligible for impact fee dollars, something like CDBG dollars could be an option. So I just wanted to state for the record that I stand with you, Commissioner Myers, and I hope staff can figure out a way to get these items budgeted, and if you're able to get them budgeted in this budget cycle, to just let us know at a subsequent public hearing and be happy to support it if we're able to get there.
Thank you. I got, I got some room, so. I'm glad to see that. So I have in the queue still, and maybe because I didn't drop it, Commissioner Cohen and then Commissioner Smith, are you guys good? You're good? Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yes. I would just like to say, in the context of our budget conversations and our, you know, millage and trim conversations, that everybody here and everybody listening should read the letter that's in the newspaper today written by Commissioner Pat Kemp, because it is an excellent explanation of where we are and what we're, what we're funding and how the mark, the housing market has played into property taxes and what we're doing with the millage. I just think that was very well done, very well researched, fact-based, and if anybody is interested in how this is working with our, our millage and our, our taxes and the property and, and real estate market these days, they should, could not do worse than to, or better than to read Commissioner Kemp's letter printed in the Tampa Times today.
Thank you for bringing that, bringing that up. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I very much appreciate that, that letter also. I think it made it very clear what our fiscal situation is. And what I did want to say is that the real story here is not about the flags, it's about the underlying $8 billion budget, which puts public safety by funding the sheriff office fully, by funding the courts fully, by funding the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue to the tune of a new fire station and additional rescue units. These are the investments that are really at the heart of this budget. That's where the real big money is. And that reflects our, I think, collective priority to put first things first and to make sure that we, we cover all of the essential items in the budget before we even have a discussion about, about some of the items that we, we talked about today. 40 million for affordable housing, you know, a lot of money from the general fund in addition to those CARES dollars and American Rescue Plan dollars that we already allocated.
Excellent, thank you very much, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank you for recognizing that. I thought it was important to do some education on the part of this board about the budget that we deal with and, you know, I'm very proud again, and I think Ms. Wise has done an excellent job in the last few years. I've, I've seen real shifts in the way our funding, to the extent that we have any, I mean, it's, it's, it's limited, our possibilities, and I really wanted to emphasize that. I think we are doing a good job with what is, it may seem like big numbers to some people sometimes, but when you start seeing what things cost, you know, 40 million dollars a road mile widening, for instance, you know, just, you know, 30 million to build an elementary school, we don't do that here, but that's the reality of it. These, these are quite substantial, and I thought one of the important points is some 68%, to be exact, almost 70% of the taxpayers in Hillsborough County are under the Save Our Homes, which is limited to a 3% increase. So they are not, you know, in any way subject to the, the larger amounts that might be out there. So I just wanted to, to make that clear. And we in government are, also have been very, very subject to all kinds of open positions, unfilled positions, because we haven't been able to necessarily be competitive or, you know, nationally and locally to keep those positions and keep our services going, but as well, we're subject to all the, all the inflation that everywhere else, and it's to have the growth piled on like we have. We, as, as was stated there and as I've said many times, growth does not pay for itself. That is not true, because if it were true, we're one of the fastest-growing places in the nation, we would be rolling in cash, we would have no issues. Instead, we have an infrastructure deficit that is incredibly serious, and, you know, we really have to look at that. So I just, I thought it was important to, you know, share or let those out there that are thinking or talking about this, the situation that we really stand in. And again, I'm very proud of what we do, I think it's how we spend the dollars that matters, and I think we're doing a good job doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, I appreciate those comments. I too am, one, enormously grateful for Ms. Wise's leadership, as well as her entire budget staff. This is not an easy process. And the county has had to address the realities of the fact that there is, you know, many, many employers out there recognize how difficult it is to compete for employees in order to deliver the services that our residents expect. And we're feeling that as well. We have, we have also, you know, employees that have been with us for long periods of time that are reaching retirement. And that legacy wisdom and memory and expertise has to be replaced in order to make sure that we're able to provide the services that our residents expect and deserve. So this, the pencil pointing that we do here to get the exact numbers as close as we possibly can, given the rapid expansion of costs and the supply chain issues that still exist in our economy right now, to be able to put together a cohesive budget in order to plan for a future that's a little bit uncertain, given where we are. But, but we do know more people are moving here. We are living in the, one I believe is the best county in the state of Florida. And, and given all the wonderful things that the rest of the country, as well as the world, is recognizing of how awesome it is to be in this location, the growth needs are significant. And I appreciate the staff's effort to make sure that we're, we're prepared for that growth as best we can and address some of the challenges that we have experienced over the last couple of years. So with that, we, I don't hear any other motions on the floor. And with that, I'm going to pass the gavel and move that we set the following proposed operating and debt service millage for the purpose of the trim notices and set the date and time and place of the first public hearing on the Hillsborough County Fiscal Year 2023 budget. That will entail the countywide millage, operating general revenue at 5.7309 mills. It will establish the debt service, including the environmental sensitive lands, at .0604 mills, for a total countywide millage of 5.7913 mills. For the non-countywide millages, for the operating budget, general purpose municipal services taxi unit, establish a mill of 4.3745 mills. The library services district established at .5583 mills. Address the debt service, parks and recreation bonds, at .0259 mills. And the purpose of the percentage change of the aggregate millage rate from the aggregate rollback millage rate, as defined by the state statute, is an increase of .9, I'm sorry, 9.98%. And is shown on line 27, Department of Revenue Form DR-420. The date and time of the public hearing on the budget will be Thursday, September 15, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at the Frederick B. Carl County Center, Second Floor Boardroom, at 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. And by approving this motion, the appropriate official is authorized to execute the necessary Department of Revenue forms for our millage rate.
Second.
Second, okay. Excellent, sorry, that was a very long moment, but I had to read every single word. So thank you very much, we have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
A motion by Chair Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Can we take a roll call vote?
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, I appreciate that. With that, we are, unless there's any other further discussion, we are adjourned. Have a great day.